Right now, I would like to suspend the rules. Mr. Egan would like to say a few words and would be very appropriate with doing the presentation with the POW, MIA, and Mr. Egan with this Illinois State Trooper that just was murdered the other day on the, serving a warrant. Mr. Egan?
Thank you, Mr. President. For a second time in just a few months, I asked the people in this room and the people on the dieas to take a moment and reflect, a moment of silence and reflect on the loss that we in law enforcement lost and we in the entire community lost this past Friday. Illinois State Trooper Nicholas Hopkins was serving a search warrant in the city of St. Louis, Illinois when he was murdered in the line of duty. He leaves behind a wife and three small children and many, many colleagues. It was very difficult to watch that procession today as they escorted him home to Waterloo, Illinois and hear the stories of his service and him as a human being. So I ask that as you take a few moments, let's keep his memory fresh in our hearts. Let's pray that his family and friends find some solace in these very, very difficult Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Next item is police commendations presented by Chief Fagan and Mayor Lauer.
Do you want to say something? Okay. Okay, the first commendation is for Police Officer Rick Conan. On May 23rd, 2019, Officer Conan responded to a call regarding a returned runaway juvenile at Mary Grove Residential Facility. While he was en route to the call, he was informed by dispatch that the juvenile had become armed with a hammer and throwing knives. The juvenile was making serious threats of harm to the members of the facility's staff. Upon his arrival, he confronted the distraught youth and recognized him to be the same subject that he had handled in a previous mental health crisis. Since Officer Conan had established a prior rapport with this youth, he had, in crisis, he calmly developed a dialogue with him. Officer Conan eventually talked the subject into dropping the hammer, the steel pipe, and throwing knives and was able to take him into protective custody with no one sustaining any injuries. The suspect, the subject later admitted that he had stolen the weapons and had several other weapons hidden at Mary Grove. Because of the trust Officer Conan gained with the youth, he showed him the locations of the other weapons and was able to transport him to a mental health professionals for treatment. Because of your compassionate caring, calm demeanor, and excellent handling in this mental health crisis, you are hereby officially commended. Officer Phil Busby and Mr. Phil Garrett. On May 8th, 2019, Officer Busby was on a routine traffic stop at the McDonald's on Porchall Road in the city of Hazelwood. When he was approached by the manager of the McDonald's restaurant, informed him, informed that a patron inside had collapsed. Officer Busby rushed inside to find Mr. Phil Garrett totally unresponsive with no pulse or respira, no respiration. Officer Busby immediately began CPR and continued his life-saving technique until he was relieved by the Hazelwood Fire Department. Mr. Garrett survived the event and was released from the hospital on May 17th. Without his quick reactions and the application of CPR, Mr. Garrett may have not, may not have survived. For his quick response, immediate application of life-saving techniques, and his professional conduct in life and death emergency, Officer Busby is officially commended.
Well, we're going to stop a little bit in the middle of our presentation here. Just wanted to take an opportunity certainly to tell Mr. Garrett how much we appreciate him being here to honor Mr. Busby and how happy we are that you're able to be here with us today. So certainly, we're always proud of everything our officers do, and this is a perfect example of quick reaction by Officer Busby and certainly had a tremendous impact on Mr. Garrett's life. So not sure if you wanted to say anything at all?
Obviously, there's no way to really thank you enough for it. Having done CPR myself, I'm sure you did a good job because my ribs hurt for a long time. But I'll take that.
Maybe break Officer Conan back. The only thing I want to talk about, oh, we have another one. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
Police Explorer Sergeant Riley Nilges participated in the 2019 Greater St. Louis Law Enforcement Explorer Academy where she significantly distinguished herself by being awarded the Best Level One Explorer and the Best Physical Training Female Level One Participant. Police Explorer Sergeant Nilges was also recognized as an outstanding student at Hazelwood West High School by maintaining a 3.8 GPA. Police Explorer Sergeant Nilges was also an outstanding athlete by competing in varsity soccer and softball. During the summer, she was able to work 35 hours per week as a lifeguard and still maintain her required duties for the Explorer post. For her outstanding accomplishments, for presenting the most favorable light on the Florissant Police Department Explorer post, and for her truly professional conduct, you are officially awarded the Certificate of Recognition.
So, so much to be proud of this evening. I truly believe we have one of the finest police departments in the entire country and certainly the finest in the state of Missouri, and I think these officers are a prime example of that. You know, Officer Conan's quick actions in dealing with a very difficult situation with the mentally ill, certainly Officer Busby, as we've already discussed, his life-saving techniques, and then our Explorer post. You know, I think there's a lot of things to be said about the youth of this community. There's a lot of times where they don't get the recognition that they deserve. If everyone would take a look in the front row, you see several members of our Explorer post that are here this evening in uniform to honor one of their members tonight. We have some of the Explorer advisors as well as the leader of the Explorer post, Sergeant Reese is here, Officer Jackson, Officer Arthur. These are officers that dedicate their time to this program. So again, I think tonight we have a good display of some of the finer parts of the Florissant Police Department. We do a lot with fighting crime, certainly we do a lot to try to keep the residents safe, but at the same time, we do a lot also to help the community, and I think tonight really is a good example of that.
So the only thing that I'd like to add is that, I mean, you look at Officer Busby, Officer Conan, I mean, you talk about 60 years of experience here at the Florissant Police Department. These guys have been here that long, I mean, at least 30 years, I think, for both of them, and you know, they're still get up every day and do this job because they love it, and that's why they're here, and that's why I say we have one of the best and most loyal and dedicated employees at the Florissant Police Department, because even after all these years, these guys still care and they still go out and do their job. Gentlemen, I appreciate everything you guys do, everything that you've done for the city of Florissant for over the last 30 years. And of course, our Explorer post, the one thing the chief didn't mention is that he and I grew up in the Explorer post. I joined the Florissant Police Explorers at age 14, and I had a lot of great experiences that prepared me for my 33-year law enforcement career, and that's what many of these young people are looking at, is whether or not that's what they want to do with their career. And I'll tell you what, we take a lot of pride in our Explorer post. We have great explorers. We have so many officers that have come through the Explorer post and are currently on the Police Department. I know the chief is, Sergeant Harmon was, no, Arthur was not, but we, I think there's like eight or 10 of our police officers currently went through our Explorer post. So we take a lot of pride. Guys, good job, congratulations, and make Florissant proud. Thank you.
This is a time to speak to the council on any issues, not necessarily on the agenda for three minutes. This is not a question and answer period. If you'd like to speak to a council member or the mayor, please stay until after the meeting is over. If you're here to speak on a public hearing, please wait and speak when the public hearing is announced. Paul Manginelli.
Paul Manginelli, 1600 Estes. 10 days ago, we had another food truck event at the Knights of Columbus, I'm sorry, the Home Association Grounds, Duchenne Home Association Grounds, got to get that right, you know. So anyway, no, we had an event, and I had been up here to thank the city for their cosponsorship a little bit, so I wanted to take that opportunity tonight to say thank you again for all the assistance that we get from the city. It really does help the event, you know, come off as well as it does. Hey, the clock's not working, I can talk all night.
Well, not a while.
All righty. Another thing that we are exploring over at the Knights of Columbus is the city has so many great ethnic festivals. So we are now planning, or at the beginning stages of planning, an Italian festival for the city of Florissant. So it's, like I said, it's at the very beginning stages. We don't have a date yet and all that, but it's something that's, after about talking about it for about a half an hour, it's going to be quite a big undertaking, so, you know, stay tuned for that. And lastly, Mr. Jones over here. Ever since that monument at Estes and Cortez has been knocked down, my in-laws have not been able to find my house. So I want to thank you. All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Paul. Next item is communication, communications, which we have none. Next item, I would like to make an amendment to the agenda to cancel September 9th council meeting, seconded by Ms. Pagano. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Eyes have it. The reason I did this...
Are we in the playoff?
Reason I did, no, that is Missouri Municipal League Convention, and there will be, I believe, five of us that are going this year to the convention. So that's why we would have to cancel that meeting. And there's several other items on the, on the agenda tonight that we would like to possibly do three readings on and so we can get that, get that through, and, because a couple of them can't hold off until the 20, 23rd.
And just, and there are no public hearings scheduled for that day as well?
Yes, and there are no public hearings scheduled for the 20, or the 9th, so it would be held off until the 23rd. Okay. Next item is public hearings. Public hearing number 1908023.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Section 405-135 of the Florissant City Code, the zoning ordinance as amended, that a public hearing will be held by the city council of the city of Florissant in St. Louis County, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 through St. Francois on Monday, August 26th, 2019, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition. To issue an amendment to B5 ordinance number 6166 as amended to allow for a car detailing bay addition for the property located at 225 North Lindbergh. Citizens and parties of interest will have an opportunity to be heard at said public hearing, and anyone with special needs to contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630 or TDD 839-5142.
Is a petition present? Please.
1908, oh, 23...
You come up to the, Mr. Dale. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Joe Dale, 743 St. Mary's Road, Villa Ridge, Missouri, and I am the architect for GMT Auto, and they're proposing the small addition to their detail shop there at 225 North Lindbergh. There's an existing operation of car dealership there, and the owner has asked me to present to planning and zoning in the council, the addition. We have a recommended approval for the project from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and one comment I'd like to make is Mr. Egan contacted me today and had one small concern about this particular operation in this detail area about the hours of operation of it, and I did talk to Mr. Travers today. The hours of operation in this detail are the same as the operation of the dealership. There's no early start or extended hours for this. It's coincides directly with the operational hours at the dealership.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Mr. Egan?
President, and again, I was, I've been by this site, GMT's been on the corner there for some time. As I say, they're very good corporate citizens in War III. I don't think, I think there's going to be very, very little impact to the surrounding areas, backs up to the pet cemetery and to a church, very little impact, so I'll be supporting this measure. It moves down. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Before we close the public hearings, if anyone in the audience would like to speak on this bill or this public hearing? Seeing none, Mr. Egan moves to close this public hearing, seconded by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Public hearing is closed. Public hearing number 1908024.
In accordance with Section 405-310 of the Florissant Zoning Code, a public hearing will be held by the city council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 through St. Francois on Monday, August 26th, 2019, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition. To authorize a special use permit to Leche's LLC, DBA Leche's Banquet Center, to allow for a catered banquet center in a B3 zoning district for the property located at 47 Florissant Oaks Shopping Center. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630 or TDD 839-5142.
Is a petition present, please? Please state your name and address for your record, please.
My name is Sean Isaac. Address is 1938 Red Clover Drive, Florissant, Missouri, 63031.
You have, you have the floor, you can explain to what you're proposing here?
Okay. My proposal is to have a event venue there off of Patterson Lindbergh where we can have events like baby showers or just be able to provide a service to the public for events where they can have things to have, you know, where to get, get out and family gatherings in a controlled environment.
Mr. Isaac, would you have, would you be having like teen parties, teen gatherings there at all?
Teen, what you mean by teen, like sports teams?
No, teens.
Oh, no. Actually, I'm the owner, well, sub-owner, would not rent to anyone less than 35. I'm not going to deal with the younger adults. Not, not, not being, it's hard to control. Most senior people like myself are a little more seasoned, wouldn't have any problems or leave it more controllable.
Now, would you be having alcohol?
No, sir.
On the site?
I'm not, not serving alcohol, and according to the paperwork I was presented, you're not allowed to have alcohol on premises. And as foremore, furthermore, I've been planning on leaving the event during the time of renting it out. I'll be the police there while I'm there.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yes, I'm the councilman in that area. The last place, the same place that you're going into was about the same before. The same renter went in there and had about the same thing you're doing.
Yes, sir.
The only problems we had with them is every once in a while after the party was over, they'd get pushed into the parking lot and hang out there for a little bit, and I did have some calls on that. So I hope we can kind of watch that where they don't bunch up in the parking lot for an hour or so. The party's over at 10 o'clock, they don't go hang in the parking lot till 11 or something like that.
Yes, sir. I have no problem policing that. When it's time to go, time to go home.
You bet. And I've been in that place that you're renting several times, as far as the restrooms and all that stuff, and then we've never had problems with the back door opening, because the back door does open to residential back there.
Yes, sir.
But I've never had problems in the back before, just in the front. Like I said, when they were going to leave, they'd bunch up in the front, so hopefully we can kind of watch that a little bit.
Yes, sir. And to piggyback on that, the back door is off limits. In case of emergency, of course, you got a fire extinguisher and stuff like that, but when I tell them, do not go out the back door, I even take out the trash, pile of trash up out that back door and after party over. Part of my responsibility is taking the trash to the dumpster, so you have no reason to go through that door.
Great. And like I said, I hope you're successful. We're glad you're coming to Florissant. I would poke at you about the trash, but I've had some headaches with your landlord for the last two years. As new businesses open in that shopping center, I've suggested trash cans out in front, and your landlord will not allow it. So if you could kind of watch the trash pick up too in front of the parking lot after everybody leaves, that would help us a lot too. Because that trash, because the landlord refuses the trash cans in the front, I mean, hers openly had disagreements about it, that trash blows on to Lindbergh and to Lindsey Lane.
Yes, sir.
Her comment was, it's been doing it for 25 years and it's going to continue to do it, which is a very sad face for me and my ward and the city as a whole. But thank you very much, and like I said, I hope you all the success in the world. If I can ever help you, all you got to do is reach out to me.
Yes, Mr. Jones, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Hinky?
Yes, good evening.
Sir. Hours of operation?
Got to be gone before 12 o'clock. I don't plan to have anyone past 12 o'clock at this facility.
Shut down at midnight?
Oh, yes. If I lease to you, sublease to you, it won't go to, anything past 12 o'clock will not be in ink or be able to happen.
Okay, and music?
Yes. If they want to bring in their own DJ, they can.
Okay.
They normally, a speaker or whatever you want to bring in, you're authorized, yes.
Okay. I have no further. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hinky. Mr. Egan?
All my questions have been answered. Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Mr. Isaac, thank you very much. Is there, before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this public hearing? Seeing none. Councilman Jones moves to close the public hearing, seconded by Mr. Shuldrough. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Eyes have it. Public hearing is closed.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Next item is old business, bills for a second reading. Bill number 9517. Councilman Shuldrough moves for a second reading, seconded by myself. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Eyes have it.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $40,000 from the Capital Improvement Fund, account number 035036148, capital additions to account number 0350330010, equipment repairs vehicles to cover anticipated vehicle repairs costs for the Public Works Department.
Mr. Egan moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Hinky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Eyes have it.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $40,000 from the Capital Improvement Fund, account number 035036148, capital additions to account number 0350330010, equipment repairs vehicles to cover anticipated vehicle repair costs for the Public Works Department.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes, sir.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Syam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones stepped out. Egan?
Yes.
Caputo?
Yes. Bill number 9517 passes and becomes ordinance 8540. Bill number 9518. Councilman Pagano moves to accept the substitute bill, number 9518, seconded by myself. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Eyes have it. Motion is carried, substitute is expected.
Accepted.
Or accepted.
Accepted, not expected.
Correct myself. I'll move for a second reading, seconded by Ms. Pagano's. Are any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Eyes have it.
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to 102 Venue LLC, DBA 102 Venue, to allow for a catered banquet center located at 1815, 1817 Dun Road.
Ms. Pagano moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Hinky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Eyes have it.
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to 102 Venue LLC, DBA 102 Venue, to allow for a catered banquet center located at 1815, 1817 Dun Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Syam?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
What you looking at me for? Egan?
Yes.
Caputo?
Yes. Bill number 9518 passes and becomes ordinance 8541.
Oh, I apologize. Harris? That's what I was like, what did I do wrong? Sorry.
Did you guess?
Yeah. You guessed twice, so what are you going to do?
Ted.
Harris? Yes? Okay. I got you. Thank you.
Bill number 9519. Councilman Shuldrough moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Hinky. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Eyes have it.
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to Legends Academy LLC, DBA Legends Academy, to allow for a child daycare center located at 1645 North New Florissant Road.
Mr. Hinky moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Syam. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Eyes have it.
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to Legends Academy LLC, DBA Legends Academy, to allow for a child daycare center located at 1645 North New Florissant Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Syam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputo?
Yes. Bill number 9519 passes and becomes ordinance 8542. Bill number 9520. Mr. Syam moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Parson. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Eyes have it.
Ordinance to authorize an amendment to special use permit number 8398 to allow for the expansion of an existing restaurant bar located at 125, 129 Flower Valley Shopping Center.
Mr. Syam moves for a third reading, seconded by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Eyes have it.
Ordinance to authorize an amendment to special use permit number 8398 to allow for the expansion of an existing restaurant bar located at 125, 129 Flower Valley Shopping Center.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? on this bill? Seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes. Bill number nine five two zero passes and becomes ordinance eight five four three. Bill number nine five two one. Mr. Egan moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Eyes have it.
Ordinance to amend B five, ordinance number seventy seventy-three, to allow for a carryout restaurant for the property located at eighty-two thirty-nine North Lindbergh.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes. Bill number nine five two one passes and becomes ordinance eight five four four. Next item is new business, board appointments. Mayor?
I wish to appoint Owen Dutt, twenty-seven eighty North Waterford, to the Environmental Quality Commission, expiration date eight twenty-six to twenty-two.
Move. A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Eyes have it.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Next item is bills for the first reading. Bill number nine five two eight.
Ordinance to authorize an amendment to B five, ordinance number six one six six, as amended, to allow for a car detailing bay addition for the property located at two twenty-five North Lindbergh.
Mr. Egan moves for a second reading, seconded by myself. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Eyes have it.
Ordinance to authorize an amendment to B five, ordinance number six one six six, as amended, to allow for a car detailing bay addition for the property located at two twenty-five North Lindbergh.
Councilman Egan moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Ordinance to authorize an amendment to B five, ordinance number six one six six, as amended, to allow for a car detailing bay addition for the property located at two twenty-five North Lindbergh.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council for final vote.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes. Bill number nine five two eight passes and becomes ordinance eight five four five. Bill number nine five two nine.
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to Leche's LLC, DBA Leche's banquet, banquet, I was gonna say barbecue, banquet center, to allow for a catered banquet center for the property located at forty-seven Florissant Oaks Shopping Center.
Mr. Jones moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Hinky. Roll call, please.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to Leche's LLC, DBA Leche's Banquet Center, to allow for a catered banquet center for the property located at forty-seven Florissant Oaks Shopping Center.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this matter? Mr. O'Donnell, how you doing, buddy?
My name's Kevin O'Donnell, five twelve Rancho lean. My question is, I have no complaint with either one of these, or these public hearings and the ordinance both being passed on the same day, but I was under the understanding that the city of Florissant does not do a public hearing the same day and do three full readings and pass. That's my only question, and I'd just like to hear somebody's explanation about how this is, that Burger King deal didn't just open the floodgates for this. Thank you.
Yeah, Kevin, earlier, we amended the agenda because we were canceling September ninth council meeting, and this is why we're doing three readings on them, so they won't be delayed until the end of September, which is more than a month away.
Well, they should've approached the city two weeks earlier then, I think. I mean, it's, it's just a matter of rules and regulations. I mean, Florissant has ordinances that I must follow, you must follow, and I think that everybody should follow them, whether they're a new business or if it's an old business. You know, they shouldn't just be given the public hearing and then three go past things and that's, it passes. Otherwise, everybody will be doing that, and mark my word, they are doing it now.
Thank you, Kev.
Thank you.
Clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Good timing.
Bill number nine five two nine passes and becomes ordinance eight five four six. Bill number nine five three zero.
Ordinance amending chapter six hundred alcoholic beverages by adding a new section to allow for the addition of a consumption of liquor license.
I'll move for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Eyes have it.
Ordinance amending chapter six hundred alcoholic beverages by adding a new section to allow for the addition of a consumption of liquor license.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this bill? Seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.[1449.83]